I've had cows that could kill you from distance.
I have four thirty-three, and at this time we'll call the meeting of the Canyon City Commission to order. And with that, Commissioner Potter, would you...
Good evening, brother. We're so grateful to be here. Lord, thank you for so many blessings. We know we've had tragedy. We know we've had property damage. We know we've had things in our city and our county. But, Lord, we're so grateful for our first responders and what they do. And they put themselves in harm's way, and we are so very grateful for the services they give our community. And, Lord, we ask that you be with the families that lost loved ones on the night twenty-seven during the storm. And, Lord, we just ask that you give them comfort. And, Lord, be with us today as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Canyon. Give us the wisdom to hear and listen and make those decisions, Lord. Love you, and in Christ's name we pray.
Right, there we are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That takes us to the approval of the minutes of the meeting of March sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Excuse me, March fourth, two thousand twenty-five. I move we approve.
Say.
I have a motion second to approve the minutes as written. All favor, sixty-five, by raising your right hand. I was like, sign. Item number five, a public comment. Comments from interested citizens?
Mayor, we have a lot of visitors. Nobody has signed in. We have Palidura Village and some students.
Okay.
And y'all picked a good night.
That takes us then to item number six. Consider and take appropriate action on Hospital Drive proposed street name change.
Yes. Sean Burns, Chief Burns is here tonight to talk you all through this and fill you in on this proposal.
All right. Very good.
That Sean, come on.
That chief, would you like to address this?
Soon as I get up out of the chair. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I made the request. Corporal Monty Platt served the University Police Department and died from an injury related to the line of duty. We are now in the process of building a new police department to be located on Hospital Drive, and it is my desire that we would rename that road to honor Monty with the police department going over there. And I've spoken to our good friends at the Palidura Retirement Village, and they are in favor of the name change, and so I asked the commission to consider that this evening.
Okay. Very good.
And Sean, you have support for that name change?
Correct. President Winler and Randy Reichel both are aware that I've requested this change, and they fully support this initiative on our part.
Ree, or Debbie, would you all want to get up and you might just rest what you did there at the village as far as for residents and all too?
I'm Marie Fowler, and I live at Palidura Retirement Village. And Chief Burns met with us about a month ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And made this proposal, and we as a board agreed that it was a good thing for us. And so we gave our members and residents the opportunity to vote on a variety of changes or, you know, forms of the name. Monty Platt Drive was what we came up with. So we're very supportive of it and honored to be able to participate. So if you have any questions, we can help you.
Thank you, both. Any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the name change.
Excuse me, sorry. Nine-one-one and the post office typically have made a policy that they do not typically approve two-name streets at this point. It's a change they made in the last couple of years for addressing. I know that's been their standard for all new subdivisions, so something to have in mind. Maybe that could be the first recommendation is a two-name, but then potentially have a one-name if that's rejected by those.
How's it? Is it? What if we renamed it to Officer Platt?
Still two-name.
Still two, still considering that two names, first and last name, it's a two-name problem?
Yeah. Again, that's standard policy. I don't know that they would enforce it in this case. I'm just glad I'd mentioned that, so we don't have to come back to this topic.
I'm sure that's my negligence and not thinking to ask you about that, Lucas. I apologize for that.
You have a preference, chief?
I would prefer to have Monty Platt Drive, and I'm more than happy to speak to nine-one-one if I need to.
There, from him, ma'am. I believe what Mr. Rayleigh was saying is if we could make first choice, second choice.
What would be your preference if that were the one?
If we can't do the two-name, then I guess Platt Drive would be the only other logical choice.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we pursue that and maybe put this on, not vote tonight on this, but pursue that and find out what they're going to say back to us? Or do we just go in?
I'm good either way. You know, to me, it'd be a little bit stronger if we go ahead and pass it as Monty Platt Drive, and then you advocate for that than if we said, what if? Just my personal thought.
So moved.
I have a motion second to rename Hospital Drive, Monty Platt Drive. So, thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. If we have issues can't get resolved, we'll address that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, ma'am. And they are the only property owners on the... WT owns some property on this street, but they're the only. Palidura Village is the only other owner. Need to vote still.
Just call for a vote.
Thank you. All in favor, sixty-five, not raising your right hand. Opposed, like that? I have a motion. We have done this before. All right. That takes us to item number seven. Consider and take appropriate action on the audit of financial statements at the City of Canyon and the Canyon Economic Development Corporation for the year ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as presented by Dozier Pickens and Francis.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Joel could not make it here. He does regret that he's not able to be here tonight. But I'm going to be introducing John Maris of Dozier Pickens and Francis. He's here to present and discuss the audit for the city's most recent annual financial statement. And John, I'm going to hand things over to you.
Fantastic. Thanks, sir. Okay. Well, good evening, gentlemen. I have heard from about three different people now. That it's supposed to be a quick meeting, so I'm taking that as my cue to keep it brief. I was supposed to be a joke. Nobody laughed. I apologize to the students. They picked a fun night to be here. Good evening. As both said, my name is John Maris. I'm the audit partner with Dozier Pickens and Francis, your external auditors. Before I begin, I do want to thank this commission for allowing us to once again come down and serve the City of Canyon in that capacity. They don't let me make the trip any longer, but my crew always comes home singing the praises of Joel and the rest of your employees. You have a tremendous group of people here in City Hall and throughout the city working for you, so I really cannot sing their praises highly enough. So, without further ado, let's go ahead and dive into this. I'm just going to hit kind of a couple of broad points as to where some things are. Starting on page number one is the letter of transmittal. That was written by Joel and Joe. I'm going to say that five times fast. I'm going to mess their names up at some point. I've known Joel for twenty years. It's just the introductory section and the overview of what you're about to be reading. Very good information that I do recommend you go through. Page eight, I'm going to land on for just a second and really sing the praises of your finance director and his department. This is the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Financial Reporting Achievement. Basically, it's the award from the federal regulators that the City of Canyon's financial statements are in compliance with all standards and meet all transparency requirements. So it's kind of a big deal that you are receiving it. Your finance department threw a pretty rigorous review. I'm sure Joel would love to say more about that. He had some colorful comments about them. But they do put you guys through a pretty rigorous review to make sure that you're in full compliance, and you are by receiving this certificate. So that's just kind of a feather in his cap. Page number nine is our independent auditor's report. This has not changed significantly over the previous year, so I'm just going to hit the one paragraph that I have to as a matter of standard. And actually, y'all are my favorite place that I get to come talk about this because you're the only place that I audit that it's not bad news. This is the third section down, responsibilities of management for the financial statements. The management of the city is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, including the design and implementation of internal controls to ensure that they're free of material misstatement whether due to error or fraud. What that translates to in English, because I recognize it wasn't, is these three pages, nine through eleven, are mine. The rest of this book is your finance director's. Everywhere else in the panhandle that I go to audit, I have to warn the governing bodies that the government accountability office, the GAO, are making a push to state that your auditors cannot assist you in preparing your financial statements. You have already positioned yourself perfectly to have somebody with the suitable skills, knowledge, and experience to write this book. In fact, he does write this book in its entirety. Y'all took that responsibility over two years ago. So you are in full compliance with a standard that's on the horizon but hasn't yet been implemented yet. So really, you have positioned yourself very well in forward thinking to make sure that you're covered for what's coming down the pipe. I never get to tell that to anybody, so I'm very happy to tell that to y'all. All right. Pages twelve through twenty. This is called the Management's Discussion and Analysis Report. If you don't have time to read this full hundred-and-forty-some-odd-page book, these eight pages are the snapshot overview of everything that we're going to be talking about tonight. It talks about the changes that have happened in the year and what your future projections are. Joel and Joe both put a tremendous amount of effort into it, so I do recommend going through and reading it. It's full of valuable information. It's nothing I prepared though, so we're not going to spend any time on it. All right. To your steps out of the way, let's talk numbers. Page twenty-one, your statement of net position. I should say the first half of your statement of net position. This is the assets and the deferred outflows of resources. Page twenty-two will have the liabilities and the equity. Just a couple of trends, not trends, but changes throughout the year. You'll see in the top corner, top left-hand corner there, cash, investments and restricted cash. The cash and cash equivalents line item did decrease by a pretty healthy amount this year. You ended the year with four-point-eight million dollars of liquid cash. That's down about four million dollars. You had some significant capital purchases in your utility fund, and that's where all of the decreases are coming from. I say your utility fund, your proprietary fund, so water, sewer, golf, and the capital project funds related to that. However, that is being offset by an increase in the restricted cash for construction. You see that four lines below that. That's up three-point-five million year-over-year. So if we look at all the city's cash combined, it's a very minimal decrease. The capital assets down towards the bottom of that page. We're going to look at that in a little bit more detail later on. Pages forty-six and forty-seven has that note, but as I indicated earlier, you had some significant purchases this year. Page twenty-two, not a whole lot going on here. I do want to point out the fourth line down, the intergovernmental payable. That seven-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar total is down three-point-two million dollars year-over-year. That was the unspent proceeds from your ARPA grants that had come from the Department of Treasury. Y'all spent that money this year, recognizing it as revenue and therefore no longer showing it as a liability to be paid back to the feds. The long-term liabilities, you'll see net OPEB, and then down to the bottom of that section, those can, everything combined, I shouldn't say everything combined, just your debt obligations are up two-and-a-half million dollars year-over-year. You had a new bond issuance noted against the payments that you made. That's the increase there. Other than that, everything else looks really good. Coming down to the bottom of the page, your total net position. If the city were to take all of your assets, convert them to cash, pay off all your obligations, this is what you'd be left over with. It's your equity. In every column, the governmental activities, total equity is up one-point-eight million. Business-type activities, total equity is up two-point-nine million for a complete and total increase of four-point-seven million dollars. Most of that is in hard capital assets, but you do have an increase in equity across the board. So, long story short, the city continues to be in very strong financial condition. Page twenty-three, your statement of activities. Just to refresh your memories on how this statement reads, because you only see it once a year. In the top left-hand corner, we have the expenses of the city broken down by what we call functional area. The governmental activities at the top, the business-type activities in the middle, and then the EDC at the bottom. Coming across the top of the page, we have any direct charges for services, any operating or capital grants that were received, coming into what it truly costs to provide those functions to your citizens. And then down the right-hand columns, we have the general revenues, property taxes, sales taxes, so on and so forth, things that are not program-specific. Gretchen, go back two pages. There we go. It's a facing page, so it's going to be kind of weird. So, as far as the expenses are concerned, total governmental activities, fifteen million dollars of expenses for the year, up about five-hundred-thousand dollars or three-and-a-half percent. No single line item. That really accounts for the increase. It's kind of spread across the city. Business-type activities, nine-point-four million dollars of expenses, up about six-hundred-thousand or six-point-eight million across the year. You did offset that expense, those expenses by having some increases in your charges for services as well. I do want to point out in that business-type activities, that three-point-one million dollars that you see there, three-million-one-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand, that is the recognition of the ARPA grant as a revenue this year instead of as a liability. So that's where that comes through and flows across. Property taxes, this, go ahead and, yeah, one more page down and then a little bit farther down, ma'am. There we go. Too far. Right there. Perfect. You'll see property taxes at four-point-three million dollars for leverage for general purposes and a hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand for debt service. Combined, you have additional revenue, and your property taxes of four-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars are about ten-and-a-half percent. What generated the additional revenue? The appraisal district gave you a bump in valuation of thirteen-point-two-five percent. You offset that by reducing your tax rate by one-point-eight-two percent. Usually, people want to hear that again. You did reduce your tax rate, but that still was able to generate an additional sum of revenue for you as well. Your sales and use tax and your franchise taxes stayed pretty consistent year-over-year. Truthfully, everything else really did as well. And then, yeah, everything else is looking nice and strong and stable as we would expect it to. Pages twenty-four through twenty-eight are the fund-level presentation. This is more akin to what you're used to seeing coming out of the finance officer's, or finance director's office on a monthly basis. You'll see your general fund, your capital projects fund separated out. You won't see anything related to your long-term capital assets or pension plans. This is effectively a cash-in, cash-out presentation. Pages twenty-five and twenty-eight are the reconciliations between what we've already gone over in some detail in this presentation. Page twenty-nine starts the retailing of your utility fund, I'm sorry, your enterprise funds, broken down between water and sewer, golf, and the two capital projects funds. Not a whole lot of new information here, just giving you a little bit more detail. So I will skip ahead all the way to page thirty-two. And make sure, one more and stop. Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. The cash flow from operations, this is your statement of cash flows for your enterprise funds. One of my favorite statements to look at, it tells you where your cash came from and where you spent your money, just in your util, or operate, I promise I can't speak, just in your proprietary-type funds, though not your governmental-type funds. But lets you see at the top page, top of the page there, your cash flow from operations. As long as you have positive cash flow from operations, things are working exactly the way that you'd want them to. Your water and sewer fund generated a positive four-million dollars. Your golf course did have a negative cash from operations of five-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars. It's a situation that we've talked about in the past, and the comment that the mayor always gives me is, but you have a golf course. And that's a valid, valid argument. So just as long as everyone's aware that it is being funded by, or supported by the other funds of the city. If you're aware of that, then we're in good shape. Okay. Starting on page thirty-four, the notes of the financials. I'm not going to go over these in any great detail. There's not enough coffee in the world for it. I know I've had to read through them. But the ones that I think are going to be of the most interest to you, pages forty-six and forty-seven, this is going to be note number three. That's what you'll see at the top of the page, ma'am. This is the graphical representation on your fixed asset purchases. You'll see the general fund over on the left and the utility fund over on the right. Since we mentioned the cash decrease, I do want to point out on that page forty-seven, the business-type activities, the, under the increase column, the construction and process, that there's your four-point-eight million dollars of cash that went out. And what that entails, I'm jumping pages on you really fast. I'm sorry. One more page over, page forty-eight. Right there. And then right in the middle of the page, those construction commitments. That is where all of your construction and processing commitments and projects are being detailed out. So you are aware of exactly what is in process and what you're working on as of the end of the year. All right. Last of the notes, really, no, not quite last of the notes. Most, last of the important notes to go through, starting on page fifty, is note number six, is the beginning of the discussion on your long-term debt. Each one of your debt obligations has its own separate paragraph, so you can see what's going on. But really, page fifty-two, the one with the chart at the top, ma'am, right there, thank you, is where I want to hang out for just a second. This is where you can see the beginning of the year of your debt obligations, any new issuances, payments that were made coming into what you owe at the end of the year, and then what's due within a year. Everything's pretty standard. You can see the business-type activities there at the bottom of the page, your new bond issuance, payments that you made coming into where you end the year. And then on pages fifty-three and fifty-four, you can see, broken down again by obligation, exactly what the city has committed itself for, principal and interest-wise, over the next handful of years. We'll leave it at a handful. Starting on page fifty-five with note number seven, is the twenty-page discussion on your retirement plan. If you suffer from insomnia, I recommend you take that home and read through it. It'll put you out like a light. There's my chuckle. I heard somebody give me a laugh. I'm going to call that a success.
It's just a fellow accountant.
Well, my old tax professor is behind me, so that's not a little intimidating at all. Note number ten over on page seventy-four. Since we are talking about the EDC as well, we'll get to their numbers in just a minute, but note number ten is all about the EDC, and it is their commitments that they have ongoing, each one of their projects, and what their funding status is on each one of their projects as of the end of the year. This way, you can see exactly what they're doing, what they've got in process, and what they've committed themselves for on each one of their projects. And that is a very lengthy note since the EDC has become very, very busy. She's going to get where I am just leaving. Note number twelve on page seventy-eight is the last time I'm going to talk about taxes. This is a very theoretical-type discussion. It talks about the constitutional limit that the state of Texas says you can assess in property taxes compared to where you actually are. The reason why I say it's theoretical is because I know Austin has kind of capped all municipalities and how much you can raise your tax rate in a given year. This is under the impression that you can max it out in one single year, which obviously you cannot. But were you to max out your tax rate up to the full two dollars and fifty cents that the state says you can assess, you'd be able to generate an additional twenty-five million, twenty-five million plus in revenue off of last year's valuation. What this tells the readers is that the commission has left itself pretty much every tool available to be able to handle a situation should it occur. You've got solid cash reserves, you've got equity reserves, you've got the ability to take on more debt should you need to because your debt ratio is actually very comparatively low. And then you've got a substantial amount of wiggle room within your tax rate should a catastrophe befall the city that you can maneuver within. So you've got options... So you've got options available to, to you should you need them. And since nobody likes to worry taxes, we're moving on from that. Pages eighty through eighty-eight are the required supplementary information pages. I'm not going to really go over these, there's not a thing to discuss. I will point out page eighty is the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund, and then everything else is just related to the pension plans. Pages eighty-nine through one hundred, at this point, ma'am, you don't need to keep up with me, we're just going to have to hit and, hit and bullet points. Eighty-nine through one hundred are just the combining and individual statements on all of your non-major funds. This is not required information, this is put in for your benefit and also for the GFOA's benefit, but it lets you put your eyes on every single fund of the city and lets you see how they're all behaving and operating. Nothing really to disclose or discuss here, so we'll, we'll move over that as well. Lastly, pages one oh one, one oh one through one twenty-one, I do want to, I'm not going to go into it in any detail, but I'm going to pause here for just a second. This is where the, it's called the statistical tables. Basically, it's the ten-year trends on what's been going on in the city, and it is full of very useful information. This is where you'll see things like your principal taxpayers for this fiscal year compared to ten years ago, your population growth over the last ten years, principal utility customers over the last ten years, things of that nature. So you can see exactly how the city's been changing over that ten-year period. It is actually really fascinating information, but I've been told I'm on a block, so I'm going to skip it. I got the mayor's smile, I'm happy. All right, finally, before I can stop rambling, pages one twenty-three and one twenty-four, and then separately, one twenty-five and one twenty-six. One twenty-three is our report on internal control, compliance with laws and regulations. You did not engage us to assess your internal control structure. However, we are required, as a matter of standard, that if we note any significant deficiencies in internal control or material non-compliance with laws and regulations, that we bring it to your attention. And I'm pleased to state that there were no such issues. That does not mean you have perfect internal controls. Unfortunately, the fact of human nature is you could throw your entire operating budget at it and not achieve perfect internal controls. What we are stating is that with the policies and the personnel that you have in place, should something material happen, we feel like it would be caught fairly quickly. And then lastly, one twenty-five and one twenty-six, this is a new report for this year because of the expenditures of your ARPA funds. So we had to do what's called an independent accountant's report on compliance for the U.S. Department of Treasury, all their long acronyms. But basically, it's saying that we look at the expenditures of the ARPA funds in, by themselves, apart from everything else, and made sure that they were spent in compliance with the rules and regulations that the Department of Treasury had passed down, that they were spent on allowable costs and for allowable activities, and you were in perfect compliance with all of that as well. And that's what this report states, and that's what Joel will submit off to the Department of Treasury as well, as soon as he's not sick anymore. With that, that's the city in a nutshell. I blew through it very quickly, and I know I also speak very quickly. I, I've put county commissioners to sleep, so I try to not do that anymore. Are there any questions or concerns over the city that I can address before we just kind of briefly touch on the EDC? Okay?
John?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just a couple things, you addressed a golf course, it is, you know, it'd be nice if we could figure out something there, but.
Okay.
Anyway, you're right, we're aware of it, but it'd be nice if we could figure out where that transfer of what is large, but.
Right.
I do think that's in there. A couple of the things.
Yes, sir.
You know, I like to bring out, you know, what our pension liability is.
Yes, sir.
You know, that, that is our biggest liability by far for the city, and, you know, there are certainly cities up in the north that have gone bankrupt basically because they didn't manage that, and so, you know, with, you know, a pension liability north of 40 million, you know, I, I like to take a look at it during this time, but.
Okay.
Bottom line is, I think we're in really good shape because our percentages, you know, I don't know expertise as far as what is good, but I've heard, you know, one tried to keep it north of 80% funded, and, you know, we're just north of 90 now, so, you know, I just bring that up because that is really a big deal if it's not taken care of.
It is, but I want to qualify what you're saying there just a little bit. This is on page eighty-one, if you guys want to see what the mayor's looking at here. This is the ten-year trend on, and it's just your TMRS retirement plan. You do have another one, but we'll, we'll leave that one off to the side for just a second. For just the TMRS plan, what the mayor's talking about is in the top third of that page in the left-hand side, you see your total pension liability of $41 million. However, through the years, you have been funding that liability down, so the assets that you have sent off to TMRS, the assets that you have sent off to TMRS are accumulating up to $37 million. So your net pension.
So the net liability.
Your net liability is only three and a half million.
Right.
And now, one thing to really point out there, because it kind of gets back to what you were saying as well, that net liability is being affected pretty significantly by market fluctuations. Right in the middle of that page, you'll see net investment, income, and loss. If you track that across the page, this is what TMRS earned in the marketplace and then has allocated to your particular plan. When they have a good year in the market, your net pension liability comes down. When they have a bad year in the market, that's when it swings the other direction. So one thing that I do want you to be aware of is that, should you get it, get the idea to write TMRS a $3.5 million check tomorrow, please don't, that will not fully fund your plan, because the market's still going to fluctuate year after year, actuarial, actuarial assumptions are going to change year after year. So as long as you're keeping your funding percentage high, which TMRS is very good at making sure that actually happens, unless something catastrophic befalls you, then you're going to be in excellent shape. And as the mayor said, you are at a 91% funding ratio. The, the county, counter, TMRS doesn't share as much information with us as TCDRS does for some reason. TCDRS says anything above 85%, and they're very happy. I would imagine TMRS is going to be somewhere in that same ballpark.
And this part was going to point out.
Yeah.
I think that's something to keep her out on that ball, but, you know, at 91%, I think we're, you know.
You're very good. Yes, sir. And unless for some strange reason you have a massive retirements in one year and you hire a slew of young people, your, your funding ratio should stay somewhat consistent, I would imagine. But yes, that, that is worth noting, but I, when you said you had a $40 million liability, I, I wanted to caution that.
Total pension liability.
Yeah, your total pension liability, that is correct. But you do have assets that you've pledged against that since the inception of the plan. So you don't still have a $40 million liability. All right.
And John, really, on page one oh one, one oh one, where it talks about the net position
Yes, sir.
component, that really gives us the best picture of where we've gone through the years.
It really does.
And this whole document right there tells us, where, where have we, where are we spending more, where are we spending less, and how things work.
Well, I wouldn't say necessarily where you've been spending more or less, there's another page that does show that, but it shows how your equity has ended over the years, if your restricted amounts are fluctuating up and down, if your unrestricted amounts are fluctuating up and down. But yes, your, to your comment, this is a very good place to look, to see how your equity has looked over the last ten years. To what you were saying about how much you've been spending, one oh two is actually the statement for that. That's that, that's that statement of functional expenses, where you can see the expenses of the city broken down by those functional areas, and then the revenues at the bottom of the page. So you can see how your expenses by functional area have changed over those last ten years.
And really, for a layperson like me or a layperson, a citizen.
Yes, sir.
One oh two is probably.
They, yes.
Page to.
Yeah.
To know what the city's done.
So, I mean, they can see that in 2015, just to, to pick on public safety, because that seems to be everyone's favorite target, the police department, fires in there as well, but police department, public safety, 2015, you spent $3.6 million, and in 2024, you spent $6.2 million. So you, you have significantly increased the, the budget of your public safety components over the last ten years, and you can track that for any one of those functional areas.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, sir.
If anybody wants to read this, it will be on the website soon.
John, the one other thing I thought.
Yes, sir.
You might point out, because it is a big deal for us, and it's kind of at the top of what we're looking for, and I did, I always pulled it up on my computer, I'm not sure which page, but you do address where we're at with our reserves.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, that, that's a big goal for us, and I think we've got some plans there to get that where we want it to be, but, but you do address that.
Yes, sir, back, all the way back on page twenty-two, your equity reserves have all come up. You did a lot of work with your capital assets this year, which is why your cash reserves have kind of dipped just a little bit, but your equity reserves kind of, through the other assets and liabilities, have offset that and come up, so, yeah, your, your reserves are.
But really, addressing back to cash reserves and where we want to get with.
Yeah.
I think you've got it addressed in the narrative here.
Page twenty-one just shows you where you ended the year with cash, cash and cash equivalent, and your investments, which are your certificates of deposit in excess of 90 days.
I, I thought I read it in the narrative somewhere.
You did, I'm sure you did. We talk about cash in a couple of different places, it's going to be heavily focused on in the MDNA, the management's discussion and analysis on page twelve through twenty, that I skipped over and said was the good snapshot to look at. Joel and Joe spent a significant time talking about the cash reserves and what the city's goals are versus where you're at and what your plan is to get to where your goals are. So, yes, that is very good information in there for you to read. Once, twice, okay. Then the EDC, just very, very fast. I'm not going to go over any of their notes because they were all already in the cities, and truthfully, the commitments note is the most important one for the EDC, so you can see kind of what they were doing. As far as their financial ratio, or financial statements go, page four of this little blue book, the end of the year with cash and cash equivalents of $652,000, that's down about $63,000 year-over-year. Their investments, $1.1 million are up $42,000. That increase is actually them putting money into several of the properties that they own and are holding on to as an investment, it's repairs and upkeep, not actual cash increases. Their non-current liabilities, towards the bottom of the page there, they are getting a lot of their debt paid down and paid off, so that's down about $50,000. Their unrestricted net position, $1.7 million, is up $37,000 year-over-year. Their, page five is their statement of activities, their, their income statement. Sales tax, again, just like for you, stayed very consistent year-over-year. Rental income at $45,000 for the year is up about $16,000 year-over-year, most of that's related to steward title. And then their operating expenses at $1.2 million are up $89,000, are a little under 8% year-over-year. Most of that is in the salaries and benefit line item, as well as, I'm sorry, most of that's in the advertising line item, and then the salaries and benefit is the number two increase. Economic development projects, they're at the top of the list, $770,000, that's down about $30,000 year-over-year, but kind of consistent in their ballpark of where they're usually at. Speaking of their projects, what that $770,000 is, this note doesn't make it into your financials, so I will point out on page fifteen, note number nine. This just bullet points out exactly what that $770 was and who it was spent on, so you can see each one of the projects that they funded in the current year. And then their note number ten is the same commitment note that I already pointed out for you in the city's financials. So, all in all, the EDC is having a very busy, busy year. They have been productive as far as starting new projects and getting commitments underway, but they're maintaining excellent equity reserves as well. Their cash balance is kind of dipping just a little bit, not anywhere in the danger zone yet, not even low yet, it is just kind of dipping a little bit. And as I told their board, that's just something to kind of keep an eye on. One or two years of that, it's not a bad thing, because that means you're funding projects and doing what you're there to do. If that becomes a long-term trend, though, that's where you want to start being a little bit more cautious. With that, not a whole lot to discuss. I'm happy to go into more detail on the EDC, there's just not a whole lot really there outside of the commitments, which I've already pointed out. Silence, so either everyone's asleep or I did good. Okay, if I can make an attorney laugh, then the rest, I don't know what's wrong with the rest of y'all.
We approve the 2024 audit for the City of Canyon and the Canyon Economic Development Corporation for the year ended September 30, 2024.
Sir.
Have a motion second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Pose like sign, motion passes.
Gentlemen, before I sit back down and let Bo bring up the next item, I do want to thank you again for your time this evening, I do greatly appreciate it. I know I probably went over my time limit, and I'm sorry, students, but our firm is not just wanting to come in at the end of the year and drive your staff crazy, although that's kind of fun. We're here for you year-round. If there's ever anything that we can do to assist you, please do not hesitate to give us a call. Our philosophy is that phone calls are always free. We don't set our clocks ticking till we either have to go somewhere or prepare something. So please take advantage of that as often as you need to. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Yeah, that takes us to item number eight, consider and take appropriate action, engagement of an auditor for the City of Canyon's financial statement audit for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025.
Sir, thank you. Joel just wanted me to communicate, 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 kind of bad when you can't even say that word, communicate his, how pleased he is with what the work that Dozier Pickens and Francis has done for us, their expertise, government-funded accounting is a special niche, and they've really shown how very knowledgeable they are, not just on current standards, but in preparing us for upcoming standards. So for this year, for prior years, the services they provided, Joel is very pleased with the work that they've done. Staff recommends that Dozier Pickens and Francis be engaged to perform an audit of the City of Canyon financial statements as of and for the year end of September 30th, 2025.
So.
Have a motion in a second to engage Dozier Pickens and Francis for this next year's audit. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Pose like sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bo.
Thank you all so much.
John, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine, consider and take appropriate action on Canyon Police Department 2024 annual report and 2024 racial profiling report. That's your part.
Thanks for having me, letting me speak. So it's time for our annual report and our racial profiling report. As always, we want to thank Megan, she put our report together, she makes it look nice and it's clear and concise, it's, it's easy to read and understand, it goes on our website, so it's available to the public. In, in my letter for, for this year, as always, I want to, I want to thank the commission for, and the city staff for all the support that we get. As was mentioned during the financial report, I know that public safety takes up a lot of city resources, and I know that, that y'all have to fight that battle sometimes, and I appreciate you doing that for us. Excuse me just a second. I apologize. Blowing dust is not good for Steve Brush. Also noted in the, in the letter, the, last year's report, we, we had to add a section, we added a page for executive order of 14074. And that order required that we notify the, the governing body and the citizens of Canyon that we participate in the Texas LISO program, which is the law enforcement support office out of the Texas Department of Public Safety. They help us get army surplus gear, or military surplus gear that we use for law enforcement purposes, and in that executive order, we were required to notify the, the governing body and the citizens that we have the ability to get controlled items, which is weapons and armor mostly, and there's other things that we don't, we don't mess with, but there's a list of controlled items. However, that, that executive order has been rescinded, so we took that out of this year's report. We do still participate in the LISO program, and we do still have the ability to get controlled items. We, we don't really, we get, really get that much equipment from the LISO program, but we do get some. Not much has changed, except the executive order was issued and it's been rescinded. We, we notify you of any major item that we get, I think, out of that program anyways. Next, we have our chain of command or our organizational chart. Couple changes to that, the animal control officer on the far right there was, he was moved under the direct supervision of the administrative lieutenant, he was under the CID sergeant. That was because our CID sergeant had some animal control experience before he came to Canyon Police Department, so it seemed like a good fit, but the, the current CID sergeant doesn't, so we just moved that around a little bit. We added the CID corporals, because we, we have two corporals and one sergeant that, that manage our, our criminal investigation division. two corporals and one sergeant that, that manage our, our criminal investigation division. We also made a change under our S R Os, uh, our school resource officers used to, um, that's gone through several changes, but as we continue to add those school resource officers, we've, uh, we've made the officers who are assigned at different schools as they, they maintain their patrol officer rank. Uh, we have one corporal, he's assigned to the high school, and then our supervisor is a sergeant. He's assigned to Midway Alternative School. Uh, Midway being the ideal choice because he's a little more free to leave and go check on those other guys and help with deals at the different school. But those are only the really big changes in our, in our organizational chart. The mission of the Canyon Police Department, uh, the next page has not changed. Um, and then the accreditation overview, we're still accredited. Once again, um, we were the, the first agency in the state of Texas to fi- to get five reaccreditations. Um, that, that reaccreditation, if you remember, was presented by Chief Burns. Um, but we're super proud of that. Uh, a little shout-out to, to Captain Coggins. He, he spends some time every day messing with accreditation stuff to make sure that, um, between accreditation on sites and reports that he has to file, that we, we still maintain those standards, like every day we maintain those standards with it. And it's not easy on Matt, so a little, a, a good job to him, I just wanted to say publicly, like, he works really hard on that and, and, uh, it does not make him popular around the police department, but, but he does that job and, and it's a very important job to keep us at the highest professional level, I think. So, into the numbers for the year in review. Um, this year, we're, we're, we're up again in, in most areas. Our calls for service are up, our, our, our actual reports are down by just one report. Um, part one crimes, I've told you this before, we, the, the criminal justice system reports, incident-based reports nowadays, and they don't really do the part one crimes, but the part one crimes are, are what people most care about. Uh, you'll see in the top right corner of that document, the part one crimes, we still list those and show those just because those are the big, the big ones that, that people are really concerned about. Um, so those, those, those are up a little bit. Um, drunk driving arrests are up, which we feel like is a good thing. We don't, we don't want people driving drunk, but, uh, we feel like we, we're protecting people when we do make those arrests. Uh, M I P, M I Cs are up, just a, just a couple. Um, and, and I point out, I, I, I always tell you this when we do the, the racial profiling report, you know, our numbers are so small that, that the percentages make a huge difference. So, um, where you see the M I Ps are up eight point three-three percent, um, that's only two people. So, not, not a huge change there, even though it's up quite a bit. Um, our citations were down. I don't, I don't have a real good reason for that. I, I've, I've claimed, um, claimed shortage of personnel for the past year, so I don't know if I, I want to use that again. I, I don't know. We're, we're, the captain and I are working hard to, to try to increase that and to keep that up. Um, not to, not to punish anybody or to, to be one of those talents that's a, that's a traffic trap, but simply because, uh, if you notice, uh, a little lower down, our, our crashes are both up for personal injury and property damage. We did sustain one fatal this, this year and we did, we had one last year. Uh, but we feel like traffic enforcement kind of controls those, those crash numbers and that's, that's our goal in trying to, to encourage traffic enforcement, not necessarily just because we want to give people tickets or, like I said, be a speed trap or anything like that. If you look at the, uh, at the part one crimes, our, our biggest two are assault and theft. That's, that's been a, a long-time thing in Canyon, I think. We don't have a lot of, of, um, burglaries, very few rapes and robberies. Um, uh, so we, we've, we've done pretty well. Um, arson, motor vehicle theft are down, but, but once again, those, those are our small numbers that we're dealing with in the first place, so we feel good about that. Um, drug seizures are kind of steady. Uh, I, I feel like we're seeing less marijuana arrest and more T H C arrest. We get a lot of vape pens that have T H C. Um, T H C is a, a higher offense than a possession of marijuana, but, but we, it, I think it's just easier to get that nowadays and, um, that's kind of more the, the choice use versus, uh, actually smoking marijuana. Not saying that smoking marijuana doesn't exist. It, it still does and we still get, get some calls on that, but T H C is kind of a higher thing. Um, animals, animals continue to be a thing in Canyon, Texas. We get a lot of animal control calls. Uh, this is the first full year that we've had our, our animal control officer, Chris Salinas, working, um, as a patrol officer and an animal control officer. Uh, he, he does a really good job. He's doing a really great job of, of getting a lot of those dogs returned and, and, and back to the owners. Um, we've, we've increased our citations last year and this year. Uh, citations are down this year, but, but that, we've increased the use of those citations to try to get people to, to comply more with our, our animal control laws, just because we feel like that's, that's better for the city and better for the animals if, if people kind of take care of their, their little, their little pets. Um, all of our wildlife numbers are down. Speculation being that as the city grows, we're kind of pushing the wildlife a little further out, so we're not, we're not dealing with it as much. Um, the, uh, of course, we don't, we don't count numbers that we, that we get off of the golf course much because that's, uh, we usually don't, don't, don't get a lot of traps set down there simply because of the creek and, and the attraction and they, they, a lot of times those animals come and go and don't bother. So, as we move into the racial profiling report, you can see that the total stops was two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven. Um, of those, two thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven, the officers did not know the, uh, the race or the gender of the person they were stopping before they stopped them. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Most times they don't, obviously. Um, the, um, the number of the stops, if you notice, is different than, than the number of, of citations that we listed for our, uh, our citations on our annual report. Um, the citation we listed on annual report was three thousand four hundred seventy-one. Uh, the stops are simply that, they're stops. So, there may be a couple of warnings and a ticket given on a stop. So, that kind of changes those numbers. I don't, I don't want you to think that we're fudging those numbers at all or not. Um, this, the, the total stops are down. Uh, like I said, we're, we're trying to address that. The street or approximate location, you can see those. Um, that's pretty subjective for our officers. Uh, they, they might stop a, a person on, uh, highway two seventeen inside the city limits and that, one officer may list it as a state highway and one officer may list it as a city, city street because it's inside the city limits as Fourth Avenue. So, there, there's some give and take there. That's kind of just a subjective thing. Um, on all the, all the other numbers, the, uh, the, without going through all of them, um, it, it, it would be easier if you, if you're interested, if you wanted to ask me some questions, as you look at those numbers, I, I don't see anything hugely concerning with the numbers of people we're stopping versus the, the balance of, between Alaskan, Native American, Indian, uh, Asian Pacific Islander, Black, White, Hispanic, Latino. Um, the majority of our stops are, are, uh, white and, um, and most, mostly male. Um, there, there is, it seems like a pretty fair balance, uh, if you look at the numbers between male and female. So, so there's nothing there that really sets off any alarm bells with me. Um, and like I said, uh, based on the demographics of our city, I don't, I don't see any huge numbers there that are, that are causing me any great concern. As, as always, the, the, um, if, if we break these down into percentages, it sometimes looks really bad for us because our numbers are so small that, that it only takes a couple of people to, to throw a percentage way, way up or down. And so, uh, we kind of look at the numbers to, to see if there's a problem. I want to assure you that we are definitely looking for problems and we're, we're, we're not tolerant of, of those, of those problems should we find one. Uh, we, we try to keep an eye on that and, and, uh, examine that to make sure that we're, we're doing what we're supposed to do. Uh, lastly, there were no, no physical, uh, force used on any of the stops. Um, and these are just stops. Keep in mind, we, we did have some use of force, um, cases during the year, but those, those weren't traffic stops that, that were reported as racial profiling traffic stops. Um, those were other incidents where, where we did have to wrestle around with some people or use a taser, use a beanbag gun, that kind of thing. So, if you have any questions, I would be happy to, to answer those.
I'm not an expert. Um, I think it's always important to point out, uh, the accreditation standard for racial profiling, you guys are reviewing body cam footage. How often do y'all do that? That's probably a Matt question.
I'm gonna say it's quarterly.
Required quarterly. We do it every month.
So, every month you're reviewing how many?
Uh, well.
The supervisor will randomly pick a, a video, sorry for interrupting, Matt. They'll randomly pick a video from each officer that's assigned as, as their squad. So, right now we're, we're, we're short, so, um, the supervisor will pick his two guys and, uh, or three, if they have three, and they'll, they'll just pick a random traffic stop video. They'll look at that, see what the stop was for, where it was made, that kind of thing. They fill out a whole form on each stop. They, they tell us if there's any racial profiling indicators. And then, of course, the lieutenant will do that for the sergeants. All of those forms go to Matt for, for his approval and, uh, his signature.
Well, that was that total then, for like a month?
Total what?
Forms that come in from reviews. Is that twelve to fifteen?
Uh, yeah, that's probably about right. It's, yeah, it's about a dozen.
Okay.
A hundred and fifty a year, probably.
Uh, I'm making a motion, we accept the twenty twenty-four, please, probably twenty-four and racial profiling report.
Second, motion second. All in favor, the motion signify by raising your right hand. Those like sign.
Thank you. I appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item ten then is consider and take appropriate action related to a request from the police department for the expenditure of C C P, chapter fifty-nine, seized funds for the purchase of emergency response team training and travel. Uh, chief.
Thank you, sir. Um, we came to you with this last year and, so we're back again, uh, basically the same amount. The Canyon Police Department has an emergency response team. Um, we're not, we're not a full-fledged, uh, big-time SWAT team, um, but we're, we're an emergency response team. We have some officers that are trained with some, some other, some special equipment and, and some skills to, to handle a, a, a bad situation before it gets to the level of where we have to call in, like Randall County SWAT or a big SWAT team that has lots of stuff and, and weapons that they can, they can deal with some of those. It just gives us a little step up to kind of take care of our citizens and our community, uh, before we have to call in someone from the outside. A lot of times our, our emergency response team has been able to, to resolve many situations, uh, that where somebody barricaded up and was suicidal or that kind of thing, we were able to handle that without bringing in a bunch of outside people. And, uh, we just kind of feel like that's our responsibility, is the Canyon Police Department, your police department. So, we, we kind of, we want to maintain that, that capability. In order to do that, we have to, um, we have to send these guys to a basic SWAT school to, uh, to receive the basic training. The accreditation program requires that the officers attend a basic SWAT school before they're allowed to participate in an operation. Um, and the basic SWAT school is just that, it's a basic school to get them to the level where they can, can train with the other team members and, and continue to develop their skills and get better. Um, we have three officers who need to attend this training and we have a training scheduled in April of twenty twenty-five that's gonna be in Lubbock, Texas. Uh, it's taught by a few two concepts. This is who we've used, uh, in the past to, to train our other emergency response team members. So, this, this provides some continuity in, in the training, um, and, 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 and brings them, uh, to, together, even though we're having the same part of the team, they're all learning the same thing and, and, and that helps our team. Uh, the, the cost for this training is eighteen hundred, for three people, is eighteen hundred dollars for, uh, tuition and then seven fifty for food and sixteen eighty for lodging, for a total of four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. This is a forty, fifty week class that we squeeze into a week. I think it's a fifty, maybe fifty, sixty hour class. Anyway, we, we squeeze it into a week, so there's a little overtime, there's some, some other expenses that won't come out of these that we'll just absorb in our, in our normal. Um, but the, uh, the total for this was about the same as last year, so we didn't see a huge increase. Uh, we're asking to use our chapter fifty-nine, our, our Code of Criminal Procedure, chapter fifty-nine seized funds to pay for this instead of taking it out of our training budget so that we can use our training budget for other things. Uh, our seized funds are, uh, maintained by Captain Coggins and, uh, and Joel, they, they keep a, a track, they keep track of those. Those are audited. I think Matt audits those monthly or, or quarterly. Um, and, uh, our current balance in the seized funds is thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-two cents as of February twenty-seventh. Um, because these are Code of Criminal Procedure seized funds, um, and because we, we obtain those funds with the use of the district attorney's office, who is an elected official, we, the Code of Criminal Procedure requires that the governing body approve the use of those funds. So, we're just asking for permission to use, uh, four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars of those funds for this training.
So.
Second. Have a motion second to approve the use of these funds. Uh, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Those like that, uh, motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
While we're talking emergency response team, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything about the E O C or event last week and staff and all of that.
You know what? Yeah, it would be appropriate to do that. And, uh, you know, I have, uh, Megan, I appreciate you helping get it out there, out, out on, uh, lines. But, uh, yeah, uh, everybody, uh, knows what a, uh, a wild weather event we had with, uh, you know, maybe some of our highest winds we've experienced in all over eighty miles an hour. And, uh, you know, the city itself, a couple of things. One, uh, did have the crash site that was south of Canyon on I twenty-seven. Uh, we had first responders out there and, and, uh, I know, uh, Chief Nguyen, several of our firefighters stayed out there through the day. And, and to me, that was just absolutely incredible. Um, and then, uh, I know Joe stood up a command center here and, uh, at the new police station, uh, which, uh, for our new bond issue, that's gonna be a positive because we'll have enhanced facilities. But, anyway, through that time, uh, you know, several, several things took place. Um, you know, monitoring that, uh, had, uh, uh, grass fire, had structural fire, had other calls for service. And, and so it was really a crazy, busy day. Uh, but in the middle of that, there was a piece here too, that, uh, uh, we were notified by XL, uh, two days prior that our electric, uh, uh, supply, uh, would likely be turned off to our main pumping station out on Kim Road. And, and so with that, um, had several, uh, Chris and Eric and, and Joe in the middle of, uh, setting up a temporary, uh, stand structure along with leasing a generator and had that online and, uh, actually had that available for electricity to, to go down out there. And, and so we were running on that, that power, uh, for, for a while out there. But, uh, anyway, so kudos to the whole team there. Um, you know, I, I had a chance to, to go out, uh, with the captain and crew to try to just run out to the crash site. This was at like two, two-thirty ago. There were people still waiting in their vehicles from nine o'clock out there. And so they'd been sitting out there this whole time and we got word that Emerald was sending a bus. And so, uh, we decided, gosh, we can, we can get out there a lot quicker. So, we had five police cars and I followed along in my car too. And, and really, at the end of the day, we mostly, uh, handed out water. We did bring a few of them back, uh, with us in O two. But, just made me realize, um, you know, I, I got out in that for just a short time, what our firefighters and ones that were out working that, I mean, zero visibility and, and that dust and eyes and breathing, uh, just absolutely incredible, you know, the service, uh, provided that day. So, wow, I just, uh, extremely impressed, uh, with our, our first responders. So, anyway, kudos and, and thank you all, uh, very much. All right. Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate that. Uh, this is also a good forum that, yeah, need to put that down. So, all right. Um, that takes us to, uh, speaking of first responders, uh, Chief Nguyen, item number eleven, uh, consider and take appropriate action on resolution number twelve, that's twenty twenty-five, a resolution by City of Canyon, Texas, supporting the application and acceptance of a fiscal year twenty-four FEMA Safer Grant for the hiring of four firefighters for the Canyon Fire Department and authorizing the fire chief to represent the city in all matters pertaining to the administration of the grant.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Um, it's that time of the year, um, that we anticipate safer grants being, uh, application period being It's that time of the year that we anticipate safer grants being, application period being open. FEMA has still not released an exact date yet when they're going to open those up. Generally, it's mid to later March, so we'd like to come to you today to ask them permission to be able to apply for another safer grant for their FY twenty-four. This will be, once again, for four firefighters. The performance period will be thirty-six months, just as it has been the past, we believe, and it will cover the base salaries and fringe benefits of the four firefighters should we be awarded a grant. Pretty much like we do.
Can hope for the best.
Yes, sir.
How many times is this? How many times have we applied for this?
Four since I've been here.
Keep swinging.
I move that we approve the resolution, number twelve two zero two five regarding the application and administration of the FY twenty twenty-four FEMA Safer Grant.
Second. You have a motion second, all in favor, signified by a racing right hand. I would like that.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're down to our little last item here and update on our Public Safety Bond Committee progress.
What you got going on, Megan? Megan's got a lot going on.
I'll wrap us all up here, friends. Since the last time we spoke here, we did have, we did go and speak at the Women in Business Breakfast. Commissioner Kramer and Commissioner Jones joined us there. We had a good twenty-five to thirty people, which was one of their higher turnouts and we had a lot of people ask some really great and insightful questions that started some conversations that I just hadn't heard yet, which I thought was a really nice way to get things started. On our social media, our Canyon Fire short video came out, so we did a big video that kind of encompassed the entire, the entirety of what the bond had, but we also broke everything out into more specific videos that really went into more detail about what each specific part, so that sixty-three, thirty-five and two percent, what each of those are actually doing. And so the fire video went out, I want to say last week. I pushed the PD one because in case you haven't noticed, our social's been a little bit full with emergency comms over the last couple of days. And I really wanted to get out the tour schedule that we are doing for Behind the Bond Q and A and open houses. I will say a big thanks to Coggins who got one of the best pictures I've ever seen out from the Canyon Police page. The photo is of, who is it, Wolf?
Wolf and Selena's total photo.
Out in the storm from the crash that was south of twenty-seven, that post is currently at over five hundred thousand impressions, which is, I think, the best post we've ever done as all the fifteen-plus social media channels that we have. And not just that, but that is also gaining us new followers. It means our impressions are up and it means the algorithm is likely to like us a lot more and put our, put our posts out in front of people because they see that people want to see them. And so that is a really great thing for our social channels and when it means getting the information out, we're more, more likely to get a couple more eyeballs on it. I was able to send y'all out our schedule. The first thing was Women in Business and the couple of rotaries that we did over the past couple of months. I'll personally attend CDC's Coffee and Conversation tomorrow. That's just going to be passing out some information. I'm not a speaker at it, it's just letting the business owners that are there have a little bit of information if they would like it. We will be doing coffee Q and A this Saturday at Palace. Palace was kind enough to give us a couple of their tables in their front room and so we're just there if anyone wants to come and talk to us. This is very casual, it's very relaxed, we're not buying anyone coffee, we're not making a bunch of people come, we're not hosting a big forum. This is, hey, join us for a cup of coffee and if you have questions, we'd love to talk through them with you. Next Monday, we'll be doing our open house of City Hall. That's primarily where we'll be walking through the old police department. It is big and empty and we can talk to people about what it was and what it will be and what it could be. And then we'll be doing a Q and A at the library next Tuesday. And so the library will be open a little bit later, I think we have it until seven. But again, very conversational. If any of y'all remember a couple of years ago when we did the water utility rate study and we had some time over at the library for people to just come and talk instead of hosting a forum or a town hall type session where we stand up in front of a bunch of people and talk at them for thirty minutes and one raises their hand one by one, we're, we're really more of a people community where people want to talk to someone directly. They want to ask their questions that they might not ask in front of a bigger group of people, they might not post that online. So we've been working really, really heavily towards being a people forward. I will have Gretchen reach out to all of y'all commissioners when it comes to if any of y'all would like to come to any of the things that are on the schedule that I sent out, just to make sure that we don't catch more, more than two of y'all at one time and make her job a lot harder. Final things is that we did also add little bookmarks, it has all the information, these are at our library right now, they're at the front desk circulation and they're getting handed out with any of the adult books, not the children's books because we seemed, under eighteen is just a little, little unattainable, but these are available for our friends over at the library. And then postcards went out yesterday that have the full schedule of the Behind the Bond Q and A sessions. They should be hitting homes hopefully today or tomorrow. So we'll see how, if, if the, if everything makes it in time. And then finally, our webpage for the bond is still sitting at our top, in the top five of most visited pages on our website. It is at number five, which is, I would say about three percent of our actual total views, but that's keeping in mind that that's over a hundred and fifty pages, not including any of our forums, not including any of our PDFs. That is just physical landing pages on our website so that you are all or that dash bond is what I'm actually looking at. And so having three percent is, I would say, a pretty good number that we're looking at right now.
If you haven't seen Chief Nguyen's video, it's super, really well done.
I love it, I've, I can pull it up and we can watch it right, right after everything's done.
Not to put any pressure on the Sooner Brew Police Department video.
There's a big gap, my bad.
No, it is, it is super, he, he just nails it and comes across really, really well in that video and the information that you put together for that is super and the production of that is, is super. The production that we've seen from.
Wendy.
From Wendy on everything that we've asked has been outstanding.
And she and I probably talked minimum once a day. We're going back and forth, we're currently planning on our Canyon news ads for April. I see all the posts before the, before they go out. She and I have been, it's been a really great team to work with. We'll also be doing open houses in the fire department and the police department, so we're opening the doors, we're pulling back the curtain and we want people to see and we want people to ask questions. It's, it's not fair for, for just words on a screen, but we're, we're going to have volunteers taking people upstairs to where the current dorm beds are and what the restroom looks like right now and, and what does this mean and what does this look like, so.
We were doing, we were doing nothing at the last minute, everything that you're seeing was done, videos were shot a long time ago, video B footage was coming at the right time of year for Canyon. We're not, we're not trying to shoot video when nothing's growing and those kind of things. But thank you, Megan, for, for organizing that and putting that all together and we are way ahead of the curve. These things are completed, she's just releasing them. As she talks about pushing something back, it's not because, oh, I don't have that ready to go today, it's because it's all lined up, it's in the queue and she's just holding it till the proper time. So I thank you, Megan, for that and, and Wendy for all that they've done on that.
We're excited for seven weeks until Election Day. Really, at this point, it is just releasing everything. We have no new information really to show people. We're, we've got nothing hidden in the closet, we've got nothing that we are going to surprise someone with a couple of days before early voting starts. This is, all the information is out there, it's just reminding people and having them vote, having them receive the information as time goes on. We'll do a couple of, we'll do Lions Club as well as Rotary in the month of April. Those will be right around the time that early voting starts. We will also continue to do direct mailers and our water bill inserts as well.
Very good. Well, thank you for working to get the word out. I know, yeah, you're definitely in the middle of it, so thank you.
If anyone needs resources, by the way, I have everything from these bookmarks to the rack cards that you see over there to full-on fact sheets, eight and a half by eleven, I have them printed all nice and pretty. If anyone just wants, I keep everything in my car in case anyone asks, but.
The QR codes on everything.
Yes, so the QR code is a single QR code for, for every single piece of material that I'm able to track. I can see when it goes up, when those postcards go out and I can see when it goes down when I haven't sent anything out in a long time, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you much, Megan. And John in the rescue, I know we've got a lot of folks going on. Well, with that, we have an exact session on the agenda, but I don't think we have anything to address there, so.
No updates. I reluctantly remove the, we.
Adjourned.
We stand adjourned and not leave before six o'clock.
Five forty-eight.
Five forty-eight, Mr. President.